Good evening. Welcome to the Quincy City Council meeting, Monday, May 15th, in the Gray Hall. This evening's meeting is getting started a little bit late, so the Chairman of the Finance Committee has agreed to postpone the 7:25 Finance Committee meeting until the conclusion of our agenda, when we will come back to finance as well as ordinance. So just so everyone is aware. But at this time, Madam Park, if you would call all members.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Crowe.
Present.
Counselor Vaughn.
Present.
Counselor Finn.
Present.
Counselor LaFors.
Present.
Counselor Leeang.
Present.
Counselor Calhoun.
Present.
Counselor Leeang.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Park.
If everyone will stand, please, and join me in a moment of silence for all of those serving our country this evening, here and abroad, and their families. And please, raise the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal to all, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Madam Park, if you agree with the meeting.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person in the meeting or recording of this public meeting or the infringement of the meeting during the meeting, attending to the authorized or such recording through a prison mission, appealing to be with a procedure of uncertainty by those present, without being resolved to the court.
Thank you, Madam Park. First item on the agenda.
2017-073, appropriation and property acquisition of the city Quincy's district improvement program.
Yes, Counselor Crowe.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, this item will be referred to the Finance Committee for a hearing at a date to be determined.
Great. You refer all to Finance. All those in favor? Next, item number one.
Number two on the agenda, 2017-074, appropriation of the 75,000 to unemployment account upon the recommendation of the Municipal Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. This was basically a follow-up to the conversation that we had there in a part of time when we noticed that this particular council monitor, now I correct my pronouns, was already in a deficit, and at which point the Director of Municipal Finance had notified the body that he was going to work on coming forward with appropriation, basically levels at the account. So we had this conversation on Friday, right? Yeah, that Friday as well. I don't know if Madam Park missed anything. I'd like you to comment.
Thank you, Counselor. I did have a conversation with the Director of Municipal Finance, and we had talked about the remaining three months that are left to pay bills for unemployment. We figured that that was agreed upon, $75,000. We figured that that would cover the next three months worth of bills. We do receive reimbursements from the college, however, it's basically on a month-to-month basis. So we are asking for a gross amount at this time.
Well, thank you, Counselor, for that question, but given you've already had the style of, yeah, move through.
Okay, motion approved by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor King on motion, Counselor Leeang. Thank you, Madam. As a free to be added to the question, how much will we have left on that end of the budget?
Currently, there is $674,428. If this appropriation gets voted on this evening, it will be down to $599,428.
Okay. And do we have any other accounts that we know of coming down the pipe that will have to be appropriated down free cash?
I do not believe so at this time. We will be getting ready to do the year-end transfers, which will occur in June. And at that time, generally what we've done in the past is we've gone through and looked at other lines within the budget that had some breakage in it, and we've taken the money out of those lines rather than the free cash.
Okay. Do we anticipate any funds going into and adding to this, or no, because it's sort of kind of before that?
Excuse me?
We have nothing that's been added to this because it's sort of, it was sort of bypassed to the card.
No, there will be nothing added to this free cash balance issue.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Leeang. So motion made and seconded by Counselor King on motion, Madam Court.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFors.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Number three on the agenda, 2017-075, the gift of $1,500 for various donors to the program.
Madam President, if you could, through you to the clerk, obviously, move approval, and could you just make sure that you, donors are recognized, who may have cloud, like, expressing our gratitude for the donation.
So motion approved by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Vaughn on motion, Madam Court.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFors.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, number four, 2017-076, the gift of $2,310 for various donors to dear King.
Similar fashion, Madam President, through you to the clerk, I move approval, and if we could, just, um, whatever, making that, the donors, it would be great. Thank you.
Motion approved by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor Vaughn on motion, Madam Court.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFors.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Park. That will end our formal attendance for this evening. We will move.
Motion.
Okay. Next, we'll move to just briefly, approval of previous meeting minutes. The minutes of May 1st, 2017, before you, there are motion to approve, motion approved by Counselor Leeang, seconded by Counselor Harris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, the motion carries, minutes are approved. Communications, reports to the mayor, other city officers and city boards, and Madam Park.
I do have some new traffic requests to refer to ordinance committee of advertising. It's got the board one, add handicap parking to One Back Park Street, add no parking on the east side of Elbunk Brook Road from C Street to 60 feet north of C Street. Board four, remove handicap parking at 38 Yankee Street, remove handicap parking at 64 Federal Left, add no parking on Garden Street at utility pool number seven. Five, add no left turn on Spear Street from Bank at Canton Drive Way westbound, remove stop sign on Spear Street westbound into Second Wing Cottington Street, add 2O parking on the south side of Spear Street across from Francis F to the end of the one-way, add no parking on the north side of Spear Street, Cottington Street to Mabrah Highway, add one-way on Spear Street eastbound from Cottington Street to 140 feet west of Mabrah Highway, remove 2O parking on the north side of Willett Street, Earl Street, to cross from Philip Street, excuse me, add no parking on the north side of Willett Street, Earl Street, to cross from Philip Street, add 2O parking on the south side of Willett Street, Mon Borough Street to Philip Street. Board six, remove handicap parking at 64 Young Street, add handicap parking at 209 Billings Street, add 2O parking on the east side of Handpark Street, Allen Road to Clark and Hammer. All to be referred to ordinance for advertising. Thank you.
All right. Motion to refer to ordinance advertising. All those in favor?
Okay. All right. We're still in communications?
Is that?
We're still in communications?
Correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to, relation to 2016, 201, I've been in the seat from a, an analysis, it's an absolutely amazing analysis, even apart from my resolution, that is a geographical of, of building stations and bus stops in the city of Quincy, and it's absolutely incredible piece of work. What I would request from clerk of committees, if you could find an additional copy, we can make part of the record, because I'm still utilizing what I have, following up. But again, it's an incredible, incredible analysis that they have, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Finn. All right. Next, we'll move to unfinished business. Reports of committees, we'll go first to the ordinance committee.
I have some traffic to start with. We want to recess, and then reopen up the, you know, what I do with the home loan petition order. How do I handle that?
If you won't recess, we'll, we'll just do it now, go into the ordinance committee meeting, or, right? Is that what we want to do? So if you want to run it from, and you can do your traffics now?
Perfect. Let's, let's get through the traffics.
Yeah.
We've got a few remaining. Okay. Counselor in Ward three, Counselor 2017-059, to install a one-way designation to Burke Street, going north from Harlem Arlington Street to Newport Ave, having the positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation, Counselor LaFors, seconded by Counselor, seconded by Counselor King on motion, Madam Court.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Also, Ward three, Counselor 2017-060, to install do not enter sign at Burke Street on Newport Ave side, and with positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation, Counselor LaFors, seconded by Counselor King on motion.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFors.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes. Ward five, Counselor Order 2017-068, to install do not enter, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. on Willow Ave, intersecting with Forsberg Parkway, and with positive recommendation. Positive recommendation, Counselor LaFors, seconded by Counselor King on motion.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFors.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Ward five, Counselor 2017-069, install do not enter, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. on Anderson Road, intersecting with Forsberg Parkway, and with positive recommendation. Positive recommendation, Counselor LaFors, seconded by Counselor Harris on motion.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFors.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Ward five, Counselor 2017-070, install do not enter, Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. on Oakland Ave, intersecting with Forsberg Parkway, and with positive recommendation. Positive recommendation, Counselor LaFors, seconded by Counselor Harris on motion.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFors.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
President Hughes.
Yes.
Ward five, Counselor 2017-071, install do not enter, Monday through Friday, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Willow Ave, intersecting with Newport Ave, and with positive recommendation. Positive recommendation, Counselor LaFors, seconded by Counselor Harris on motion.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFors.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
Okay, last one, Ward five, Counselor 2017-072, install do not enter, Monday through Friday, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Oakland Ave, intersecting with Newport Ave, and with positive recommendation. Positive recommendation, Counselor LaFors, seconded by Counselor Harris on motion.
Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor LaFors.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
Great. So this time, we're going to have Counselor LaFors come to, run the, go back into the ordinance, report in the ordinance committee, so we'll go back to our discussion regarding a home loan petition. Okay, we have. All right, so we have to order 2017-055, to home loan petition amending Chapter 64, Section 3A of the Acts of 2001. This is an act authorizing the city of Quincy to impose a local room occupancy tax, also known as the hotel tax, on open space recreation of the road. So this was authored by Counselor King and Counselor Crowe, that Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So we talked a little bit about this issue, I think, over the last few council meetings, and, you know, tonight is not even discussed in ordinance committee. This is providing a solution to a problem that I currently see, and have seen since running for this seat, as a pretty evident issue in neighborhoods around the city. One of the top requests I received from many constituents are those to repair streets and sidewalks. These are high-ticket items, there isn't that much money available to replace streets and sidewalks, and, you know, it's something that, that also, I guess that we can talk about, there isn't necessarily a general process to address these issues. We look at considerable spending issues around the city, whether they are, you know, dancing areas around the downtown area, there are dancing parks around the city, and this is an issue that means a lot to me. I, I think that at the time when this original hotel motel tax was proposed, there was probably a need to address certain park areas in the city that were, you know, that weren't being taken care of as someone would have preferred, or people would have preferred, and now I think we have issues that, you know, that come to a different time that need to be addressed. We talked about another community issue earlier, which passed through ordinance committee, which is Glorian Speedway, which is a great area, which I view this along the same lines. We have thousands of people that are using streets in the city to pass through the city. We have neighborhoods whose streets haven't been addressed, or rehaved, or retouched in many years, and this is seeking a way to leverage what are non-personal or real tax dollars for the benefit of the taxpayer, to give them a break. We've seen taxes increase year over year, and I think that this is a way to give people a break, and to see a benefit for, for their appreciation on the assets that they own here, which is their property. So I, you know, tonight I'm going to make a motion for a positive approval on a committee, and I'm going to ask my colleagues to support, to support me as a district committee, and I'll get back into regular council session. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Crowe.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman, I'm kind of lost a little about what I did.
Go ahead, Crowe.
Yeah, so, this, you know, this, and I know that we kind of talked about this a little bit in committee, to the currently, you know, situated hotel motel tax. My mind, it's just kind of thinking outside of the box, and providing an element of creativity to a very, my mind, versatile revenue stream. We've heard, I've heard, we've all heard, you know, council session after council session, year after year, term after term, the same ailment that the city of Quincy, and to shoot my district as an example, you know, suffers from, and that's just lack of investment in, in roads, quite honestly. I think we've come a long way with the sidewalks, we heard from the commissioner this past budget season, but the reality is, you know, our roads are not shaped. You know, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure this out, right? To the point where, you know, road disrepair becomes a public safety issue. And as many folks know, and I say it all the time, it's the truth, and I believe it, I represent, you know, a very senior-oriented demographic throughout the city of Quincy, with none that are very, you know, honored to serve, the condition that these folks reiterate, you know, the sidewalks, and particularly the roads being, are just, they're beyond their usual lifespan. So, you know, thinking through what we're really asking here, they're just trying to, you know, look at a revenue source that isn't necessarily tied to the tax payer, per se, but, and I think this is a key differentiator, it is a revenue source. So any time we make a decision out here, in my mind, regarding, you know, the use of revenue source, typically the duration of that decision is anywhere between 15, 20, 25 years, right? Because we're going to go, and we're going to bond the money, and basically it's locked up. That's the way I see it, because that's the way I believe that it is. So the, the notion behind amending this particular hotel motel tax is just to sort of broaden the field, right? And, you know, identify and address those 270 miles of street that I know affect every single ward council in the city of Quincy, and, you know, I think it's Counselor King that said, you know, pass some of this on to the taxpayer, but I think more importantly, and I've always, I've always said this, I feel like the best demonstration to a resident of their taxpayer dollars in motion is when a, you know, when a, when a road repairer is in there, and able, like, doing over the street. It makes sense on so many levels, and particularly in my district, I know we're also dealing with antiquated infrastructure that goes well beyond just the road, and it's actually the, the infrastructure below grade, right? So the water mains. And I know that, you know, we had this conversation on Friday, but for me, you know, my, you know, my list of being able to, you know, produce positive results across roads go in my district of Quincy, because the majority of those roads need water mains replaced. So I think it's a, it's a, it's an issue on a much larger scale that needs to be addressed. And I'll tell you, I was on my way into work today, and just kind of going through, you know, the events of tonight, and obviously, we've had, we've had a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff in front of us in the last, you know, couple of weeks, and, you know, if my math is correct, we have roughly the $300 million budget, which we're going through right now, parking improvement plan, capital improvement plan, that's roughly, we'll call it 25 million each, and a, you know, appropriation to debt, which is roughly $8 million. We have over $400 million pending financial requests in committee right now, and not a dollar of those attached to roads. So here is a very tiny prudence, and I believe, you know, a, a solution to an issue that can, you know, help every resident in the city of Quincy, like Counselor King said, I would certainly urge my colleagues to, to join us in supporting this measure this evening. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Counselor, can you go now?
Yes.
That's okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for looking closely into our, our counsel forest. Just looking back at this whole home loan petition that was established and amended back in 2001, we're looking at today, we're coming in 2017. The population back in 2001 was 88,894, today it's at 94,000, an increase of 51,06. So 5,000 more people are living in the city now, over the 16-year span. Counselor Finn is sitting next to me, he's been on the council this long for the 16-year difference. Well, he's not sitting in there right now, Counselor Finn. Going to miss him. But.
That's great.
We're talking about revenue streams for hotel motel tax, as well as the capital improvement plan that we just appropriated, and just approved this last year, for $5 million for roads and sidewalks, and then there's Chapter 90, which is roughly to $1.92 million, and we did a new allocation after July 1st. But right now, we really, we haven't gone into a, a budget yet with appropriation or funding source for a budget for roads and sidewalks. So basically, the two other sources right now that we have for the city of Quincy have been the Chapter 9 funding, which you get on a yearly basis, 1.9, and we've done the capital improvement plan for $5 million so far. I agree, the sidewalks are in pretty decent condition, we're doing a lot of repairs to them, I see we kept, we caught up, but the roads are in bad condition out there. But when you look at the situation, I say to myself, let me, what would I be doing if I was in the mayor's position beforehand? And I would be saying, well, this is a, this is amendment that's set up for the parks, so I'm not leveraging parks against roads. I'm basically saying, this is, this is a great idea, this is looking outside the box, and I want to commend Counselor King and Counselor Crowe for bringing this forward. I will be in support of this amendment tonight. Doesn't mean that I will not be supporting park improvement plan when we get to those folks down the road. I don't like to leverage and throw, throw a wrench in the mix, but moving forward, I hope that this 2017 home loan petition amendment is going to move forward to help out with the roads out there on, on, on the streets. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Leeang.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I do just want to thank my colleagues, Counselor King and Counselor Crowe, for putting this out, you know, Counselor, you're right, we have a lot of people in the city that have continued to build, you know, that does go strain on our roads, but we also have to remember that we have parks coming down the pipe, one of which does include potential hotel rooms. This fund will have potential to grow by other ways, other than the current hotels exist in our city, as we stand today. We do have another hotel potentially coming down the line over West Lawn Street as well. And so again, as our city continues to grow, not only are we going to grow in our capacity of hotel rooms, but, you know, send them up outdoors, and I believe we're affecting the happening downtown. So I think that this is a really interesting and really creative way to help solve an issue that is number one for a lot of residents across our city. Not to discount the fact that the parks, and conserving our parks across the city aren't number one priorities for other residents in the city and town as well, but I think this is a really, really creative way to address both issues with what we have, so I wanted to, again, thank you both for bringing this into our body, and we'll be in support of it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That motion is approved by Counselor King. And so, is this, turns me back to the committee that?
I think we can take it up, right? I think we can take it up, committee vote.
Okay. So is that? Second, right, Counselor, Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Vaughn.
Yes.
Counselor Finn.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Leeang.
Yes.
Counselor Calhoun.
Yes.
Counselor Hughes.
Yes.
Chairman Forrest.
Yes.
Eight members of the council.
We do have one more in the ordinance committee, that's Counselor Order 2016-287. This comes out of committee with positive recommendation, is the adoption of Section 193 of Chapter 218 of the Acts of 2016, proposing acceptance of the provision of the Municipal Organization Act, that allows for a community to establish a fundamental speed within 25 miles an hour, on other ways, this was authored by Counselor Harris. So motion to approve.
On motion, Counselor King.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Council Zona.
Yes.
Council Finn.
Yes.
Council Harris.
Council Liang. Yes.
Council Paul Chu.
Council Hughes.
Yes.
Chairman Forrest.
Yes.
Eight members of councils. Thank you, Council Forrest. Next, we will have a report out of the Finance Committee. Council Crowe.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I would like to take our committee, Councilor two zero one seven dash five zero, which is the appropriation of twenty-seven million from hotel motel tax for park improvement plans. And I believe we're joined here this evening by the park director.
Great, thank you. Mr. France.
Good evening, Paul.
Madam President, Councilors, I think in my previous presentation on various projects that we're planning to do, the only one that I didn't get to, the only one that we haven't discussed or can introduce to is the replacement of the artificial turf at Veterans Memorial Stadium. We budgeted half a million dollars for that. The turf at this point, right today, is safe. It's a little bit unsafe because of the UV degradation of the green top of the grass. But as of this moment, right now, it's perfectly safe. But it has been creeping towards the, towards the unsafe limit. What's called the G max has been rising ever since the field was put in. Safe level is G max of two hundred and we're approaching a G max of one sixty right now. So by the time we put specs together and bid it this coming winter and do the replacement next summer, that would be the summer of eighteen, twenty eighteen, we would expect to pay a half a million dollars for that product. And that would be the end of my list of projects.
Any questions from France? Council Zona.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, pardon, Mr. Chair. Mr. France, thank you for all your help on everything. The Veterans Memorial Stadium new turf, how long's the duration? How long's that last for? If you put it down, if it's appropriated tonight, how long's it gonna last for lifespan?
We would put down the same product that we put down Creed, just this past year. And we generally get a warranty of about eight years on it. But the advertised life, the industry norm would be ten to twelve years.
Okay.
And we're coming up on eleven years at Veterans Stadium. By the time we replace it, it would be eleven and a half years old.
Well, I'm, I'm very familiar with that stadium. They played many games in the old stadium where they had the track that went around it, the grass curve. And then you went to eleven. So it's eleven years since we had the, the artificial turf on there. And you said usually it's the lifespan of a lot. Now, the material, is it a little different than what we have on there now?
Yes.
Okay. Was the lifespan supposed to be eleven years or over that time zone for the last turf that's on there presently?
The turf that's on there presently were right on schedule.
Right on schedule. So this is a good time for the transition to put the new turf in there?
Yes.
And have a lifespan of, you said, ten to twelve?
Ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve. Okay. That's, that's all the answers to the questions. I think, thank you, Mr. France.
Paul, Mr. France, are you going to walk us through this presentation?
I know. I think Council Forrest is going to run through the maritime center presentation.
Can you come over to your seat or?
Yes, I think.
From the balcony?
I guess I could stay here. I could come up there. It's a little unconventional. I'm going to be a project manager. Okay, we'll go there. All right. Good evening. I am with me this evening Lieutenant Bob Gillen from Quincy Police Marine Unit, whose office is based out of the HouseNet Maritime Center and has been the, my team project manager office project. So we can be a little bit of a side history. I gave you two packets. One is the property presentation we're about to deliver. And second is the flood map, because when you see that in the J page, it's very hard to see on the screen. And then the, from the GIS, the property record cards for different properties and questions. But that's the second packet that will not be up on the screen. There we go. So the history of Houssneck, which started in the early nineteen hundreds. So you can see that Blackwater voting has always been important to us Houssneck residents. And back in the early nineteen hundreds, Houssneck was a tourist destination. It's more like a vacation boat. We bring tourists. We have a lot of hotels and a lot of fun things to do. So a lot of faulty generations of voters through the years. But this is all the locations of public landing here at Houssneck on Big U F. So this is how we have this today. I think here is PowerPoint today. So just for, for any reference here, I'm going to kind of, with a laser pointer. So this here, Ramon Island, then Blackwater, we call the P L, the public landing. Those have been done, have jumped the P L. This is what we're talking about. Ramon being right here with the boat ramp at the end. Boat ramp in the middle. We call these the Maritime Center floats. Some people call them early floats. Some people call them police floats. They are public floats. They do belong to Maritime Center project. In our Maritime Center building, we have kind of, this year is what we're going to talk about. So when you come to Louis parking lot, and you come down C Street, you can come up here. This is the fairway for the boat ramp. You can see it's very, very tight with this house here. So house number one, house number two, house number three. And this is the parking lot for the trailers. So this is the state-owned trailer lot, Maritime Center building, state-owned. The ramp, state-owned. This kind of Maritime Center facility. The public landing itself is municipally owned. So current functions, we have half the area of Maritime Center. Primarily it's utilized as a boat, as a boat launch ramp. We'll talk in trail parking. We'll talk about central location of Boston Harbor. Quincy has two thousand boats registered with waters. We have six, five in marinas and five yacht clubs. A lot of the voters, this is for myself, eighteen foot center console, you put voting once a season, you drop any more. We are getting storms coming through, you probably pulling it out once in the fall. That's kind of the typical Quincy boat ramp user. We have the harbor master office there. Harbor master isn't a staffed office, but they do have a physical office in space. The marine unit and school unit mostly have their equipment and storage there. We'll talk about the facility. But down in the basement is where we have a lot of water infiltration issues, a lot of moisture issues. And we have a lot of our dye here. So you would think, hey, dye here, it's okay for that to get wet. Not the quality of the gear that we have, not our, very expensive sand equipment and some of the equipment needs. Command post. So we'll see some slides here where the Maritime Center has been used for emergency response planning, a lot of the jumping, jumping too. One of the slides everyone sees is the Maritime Emergency Boat Stage. So just like the Miracle of the Hudson, Logan Airport, Quincy's within the flight path of Logan Airport. So we simulated, what would happen if those planes crashed in Boston Harbor, Quincy Bay? How would we respond? How it all works, Quincy's get together. The Maritime Center was used as a staging area for that, one of the staging areas for that incident. We'll talk about that. The community room. So voting safety classes, Quincy has some of the most popular voting safety classes within the Commonwealth. I myself use it for neighborhood hearings quite frequently. The animal shelter, we have given use of the space. The Girl Scouts meet there each week. So we have open access to large organizations. When the Yacht Club was closed, all the meetings were there. Let's say organizations there. The other, not only our municipal law enforcement, as well as some other agencies use the community's road before some of the other things. Okay. How it came to base. So going back in the nineties, when coastal climate was taken and Quincy was working in collaboration with King, King of Boston Harbor, Quincy Bay, the public access, the concern was this would be developed condos and public access would be limited. So I have to give a shout out to my colleagues in the city council at the time, representing Ward one, the council president, Eva Colson. And at large, council is also leading Ward one by Jeanne and Paul Harold, who are part of the team working with the state relative to the site acquisition by the MDC to ensure public access continued from this facility. So since it was owned by MDC, we had an MOU with the city of Quincy. And basically, when I took off this credit, I thought, oh, this is a golden ticket. It says that then DCR was financially responsible for the maintenance. However, the redefined credit, that's pending any appropriation. So the fundings never came. So in nineteen ninety-nine, a lot of the funds weren't funded. I believe, I received a grant from the Hope and Trust. And how the landing and repair decking, it's fundraised, she's over ten years ago, probably closer to fifteen years ago at this point. Then we came on, we're looking for different funding sources. We replaced the public landing in some pilot repairs and some community preservation funds. We received a grant in the summer of twenty thirteen from, it was Division where Fisheries, and that was just to prevent a lot of the erosion was breaking away in the, in the damage to Maritime Center float. After the tough winter, we did, had a lot of ice damage. The pilots, you can literally put your hand through your sister together, you put your hand through them. The decking became detached from the actual public landing, from the pilots. It, it's been a real struggle of band-aids for duct tape on the public landing. One of the things we are grateful for for the ramp maintenance is the TPWs regularly down there for us, making sure that there are pressure washing the ramp and keeping that clear of any growth. Okay, so here's the boat ramp. I don't know who, who run the well here are voters, so a little bit against education. So you'll see up here on the first slide, a trailer, trailer launching. You can see it's a single access. A lot of the boat ramps have, you know, run the launch and will retrieve simultaneously with the width of the ramp. Our ramp in particular is very narrow. You can see the length of the ramp at bow tide. So this is the current conditions. This is the reality check of length of boat ramp in Quincy. You can see the bottom sections have broken away. This is a real public safety hazard, and why we've been working so hard to get, trying to repair the actual ramp itself. So this is what you're going to be seeing for ramp construction at this season. And funding is purely from support economic hazard. This is just a rendering as to what to expect for reimbursement of our ramp. Okay. So location of the boat ramp, this is what's, why this is such a priority. As you see, that this is, we're familiar with. But you can see the numbers on the slide. So in the upper middle, number one, that's one, that's a DCR. We have, they have a lot of the same issues with the tide, the filter over there. They have some of the same issues that we're experiencing, same comes with the DCR funding and maintenance. Number two is up in Chelsea. Number three is Elmer on the map, that's the Rochester gas tanks by Old Harbor Yacht Club. After nine eleven, that ramp was closed for home and security reasons. So you can see, you know, in the Boston Harbor area, as far as public access, a lot of the marinas, yachts have their own ramps. So as far as the voting public is very limited access. So number four is us. Number five is the main hip along the Back River. DCR facility, the best in the area. Number six is the hang up in the bathing beach for a young crew of eight. And number seven is at some of Pier Eight Street in the hop. So when you look at the chart of Boston Harbor and Boston Harbor Islands, you see we're very limited as to how we can get the voting public onto the water. This is just going to be a more general view. If you're taking off out of Logan, kind of what you, what you can see with the Harbor Islands. Jump on in. Your slide's coming up next. Okay. So I'll just do the, kind of the arrows here. The first upper arrow is the Boston Police here. During the Maritime Emergency Planning Exercise, what was determined is to get any emergencies or any victims to Boston hospitals is the priority. Quickest way to get that is to transport them onto the lot at Brooklyn to three oh ten, where we have Boston Animal Services, transportation, transportation. Quincy Bay, the middle area, I think, Mall City Beach, I believe a lot of the cons were invited to attend this exercise. And you can see our location, the lower arrow is the Maritime Center. So here we have the exercise during progress. This large vessel on the left was simulating the airplane. This is the fleet pulling up. You can see the overhead and I believe that Boston Fire Boat, which actually is a young water range operation, they had command of the scene. The picture on the right is all of the responding agencies. So you can see with the logic coordination, you know, think about all our emergencies. But this is the reality of who's responding and what, and what needs are. Okay, guys. I'm trying to move this a lot more again.
Members of the council, thank you for having me out there. Again, I'm Bob Gillen, Lieutenant with the Marine Unit, Deputy Harbor Master under Chief Keenan. As Council Forrest said, in order to test the viability of the site, in order to test the viability of the site, because the site is designated as a federal staging area for looking for maritime emergency response, that type of response would include aircraft disaster, ferry disaster, pollution response. So in order to do an area exercise to allow all federal, state municipal parks to trade together, we simulated the Miracle of the Hudson incident where a plane would come out of Logan, possibly have a bird strike. The captain would have to make a split second decision. As you can see, due in the logic space, open area, Quincy Bay would be a desirable site. Unfortunately, you had to ditch an aircraft. So in order to simulate that, what we did was we took a coast scout cut of the black vessel you see there, and we loaded it up with Army Reserve volunteers. And we simulated that was an aircraft that had just ditched coming out Logan. As you can see, on slide to the right, we had approximately forty-one agencies responding on the water. These agencies ran the spectrum from the federal agencies right down to the state police, and of course, all the municipal police departments and harbor masters. And what we found from that, that particular drill, it opened up the eyes to a lot of the federal plans and to wealthy planning committees within the Port of Boston, that the Maritime Center Quincy could serve could very successfully serve that purpose. And we have actually drilled it since then. And we did use it on a minor level for some, two ferry accidents we had in the last five years. In addition to that, as Council Forrest said, we use the Maritime Center for our underwater recovery team, police diving. You can see the divers going down there, going up on the Quincy Police Guardian. If you look at the slide on the right, you can see five vessels there. Those five vessels were traded for the upcoming sale of Boston event. So luckily, we can use the Maritime Center for onshore trading portion of it. And then we can get all the boats together to go off the harbor and practice the actual response.
Okay, so here for those of the facility conditions, I'll give you speak flood maps and storm events. You see the sandbags by the door. This is the door that accesses all the Quincy police, the main area of the Maritime Center. What's, what's that details?
Equipment, yeah. The equipment is due to our investment, support security grants of approximately six million dollars for underwater recovery committees housed in that particular facility. We use, in addition to using that particular gear for underwater recovery, we also use a proactive structure right now in anticipation of the tall ships that the Quincy Police Department is using that gear to develop an underwater map of Boston Harbor, which we're going to give to the coast cops and the sale of Boston to prevent, or actually deter the acts of terrorism, one of our head time, what's underwater, what's in the feds right now. In addition to that, we send that unit, like today, we got a request for that unit to go down to Franklin to search for our Boston individual. So we've been lucky to procure this particular gear from the federal government for port security grids. We have it down there. But as you go, you can see the building's in tough shape. The picture on the left is very representative of what the corrosion of fifty years being in a salt environment has done to the building. We've got engineers looking at the building. Those structural numbers really can't be viewed here.
Forrest, this is one of my favorite topics, the flood map. So what I've outlined is the parking lot portion of the property of Big U F. And made yellow, you can see, even velocity in the strike zone, probably better see this, velocity in the conduct. That's the actual housing character in the center, if it's in velocity zone. So when you talk about homeowners who want to make home repairs, there is a rule of the building code. If you are making repairs that exceed fifty percent of the value of your structure, you must make said structure, you know, compliant. So a homeowner owns a house, they make a thousand dollars. The house itself maybe is an old condo, the value of the structure might be a hundred thousand dollars. You're putting in a new commission, you can open your house, make a, 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 compliant. So the municipality, we're not exempt. We are within the velocity zone. And part of our meeting review is we completed a lot of this as we were going to do. We could grandfather footprint elevated that one time. We're down in the velocity zone as far as rebuilding the Maritime Center. But like Lieutenant said, the repairs are not viable option for the physical Maritime Center building. One of the locations, one of the uses of the Maritime Center, one of my favorite uses is some of the public events that are hosted there. So here, I think a lot of you have attended is the Chauvin Fest. And I should recognize in the audience is Jim McCarthy, past president of the Houssneck Maritime, of the City Council, as well as past chairman of the Chauvin Fest. So we had a great time. A lot of, we were able to string a lot of the law on the, please go, go ride that day. It's a great day in our community. It's really a big Houssneck reunion. One of our really favorite Howson events is Vet's Day, this is where the, uh, Boston Harbor and Lost Ones Association takes vets out for a day, issue on the wire, this is, uh, the, was cited, this typically department, Quincy Yocca, Quincy Yocca was closed the past few days, we utilize Maritime Center, because of the D A compliance, very difficult, the D A compliance, uh, on, on voting facilities, but the Howson Maritime Center, um, is probably the easiest access. You can see the difference in the grade, the variation to public landing ramp on the right, and, uh, that is where everyone, voters typically stand out of the close where the lobster boats are, and the kids swimming and, um, hang out on the public landing floats, so we give a little space there. So what is what we're going to need for this next generation of public landing? Um, I've got rope and cramp and floats, we have funding secure, we're recently prepared those. Parking and trailer parking, so we're going to get a little bit into the depths of the trailer lot, because that's very clear what homes are against this trailer parking lot. When you, I don't know how many of you have driven a boat in a trailer, uh, but it is quite difficult. So, um, some like me have the luxury, like my husband will drive a truck and a trailer, I'll drive a boat over to the house, put on the morning, and the truck and the trailer go home. Those that don't want to go on the water for the day, you get to park it in the trailer lot. It's very difficult to navigate, we haven't, uh, set up right now. And it's, in particular, the concern that we've heard is, you know, when you have the longer trailer spots, and then you have vehicles side by side, it makes it very difficult. So we're looking at better passenger vehicle parking, better trailer parking, they will pull through, and then the better planned pedestrians in the area. Uh, police and maribor parking, that's actually something where Bob talked about, earlier mentioned in the chief, hard chief, a bunch of times. So we're looking to kind of designate an area, um, on the floats for this summer, so the fireball can stay in the water. But we're looking for maybe a better layout and design, because it faces too east of this location. So typically today, if you're picking a location for your boat ramp, you would not face it too northeast, northeast. But be it that permitting a boat ramp is pretty difficult, even in a pretty busy condition, it's what we have to work with. Um, public landing, we're talking about some sort of better, better public access, you can see the title's changed on the gangway, it's very difficult with the bow tie. And the Maritime Center and the community center, the actual building facility, the Howson Community Council actually just voted, they are currently located at eleven ninety three C Street. Uh, little fun fact that the Howson Community Council, many of the board members are actually founding members of the Manic Community Health Centers, who have built this construction, that was a great partnership. Manages your own community, uh, community center, one from a building to a room, and, uh, space is tight, parking is tight. So this is really an opportunity for the next generation of community centers. As you know, Howson is very strong, you have heard of strong programming, where there's super programming, children's programming, adult programming. Um, the, the Howson Community Council is very active, and so we're excited now, working with them on the design to meet the I G's. And of course, the water access. So here we are, a land and acquisition, so again, each of these parcels you have from the G I S traffic record. What is going to be difficult is that what you would think are one parcels on G I S is due up into a few parcels. There we go, all right, so on the laser pointer, here, the laser pointer, here's the Maritime Center building. Across, you know, this is the cross house, and in particular, this property is in the velocity zone, the new map change. And then this is the fairway, so you come down C Street, and then you're going to come up here, and then you're going back to the building, because there's a flight path today. So the fairway is very, very tight, everybody will tell you, uh, so that is a particular problem, property for us here. The other, yeah, issue is, uh, some of the utilities here, a lot of the boats, particularly the Yocca boats, some of the bigger boats that the members have, they can't bring a boat ramp because of the heights of the utilities. But when they launch in here, they, they're like that, that's the Yocca. But why make two seats, because of the Yocca boers, all of those, um, would like to be able to get in and out of the trailer lots, they're very utilities. We have here, uh, the How House and the Poppy House, this is Bayou Ave. Bayou Ave is very narrow, very narrow in this section, and the thought would be, we would have enough change of every utilities, why do Bayou Ave change the flight plan, have it, it's hard to take? This then would then be deemed the trailer lot, the Louis' parking lot would be here towards the, um, passenger vehicles. We do not, you know, see a couple of, um, renderings of the trailer lot, we do not have a final design game plan, that's what we are now. We are working with time on as our engineering term, wrestling as our architect. So on the right, you can see the, uh, you know, just what it would look like with those houses, with those houses going in, very minimal landscaping, again, one of the issues that we're really having is a lot of blacktop, and Howson, we have their garden level, like, really, most of the printing space, one makes them, we made this a beautification project. And, uh, this is, well, it's just a, um, quick look is not what we're looking to do. In particular, the topography of the site, this site, um, the Bayou Ave side is much higher than the C Street side. And one of the ideas we had is to level the trailer lot, and then make it almost like tourist gardens. Because we have such stormwater issues in this area, we have a broken alley call, we have issues with the seawall. Uh, Quincy Yocca, we're looking for an opportunity, uh, in particular, I saw, um, Joe Shea here earlier, he's still here, uh, is what we can do is, as, uh, we're looking for in the ratings, is how we can include this, uh, in the flood plate. And so you see this is an area of the watershed, this whole neighborhood, and, uh, like I said, you have that printout, we'll expand it, the flood map, to show you, give you an idea. So trailer parking, traffic flow, off the street, area utilities, some groundwater management, and some traffic calming measures. This again is just another rendering, we're trying to simulate, as that vehicle comes off, boat ramp is the best game plan. Again, we're starting to make on this, this is kind of just different, different takes. Uh, this was a rendering that we looked at with, um, sorry, with taking the Maritime Center building, again, not saying we take this L shape, we're just using a footprint, but the I G A compliance is something that we have to figure out. So we had talked about whether we keep the clothes with the Vet's Day, whether we build a public access, this is more like what you would have seen if the Quincy ship got its ferry docked, uh, kind of come back around, you need to meet the gray. That, the, 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 that's what we have, it's just not going to work, and so, uh, we're just looking at alternatives. Just another, another perspective, we had talked about what, what we can do for public access, and one of the thoughts would be kind of a wraparound deck, we can put the opportunity for that passive recreation to create a place people like to come down, the little ice cream shop down the street, come to these schools, or come to Louis', have their, bring their lunch, sit out down here, it's just kind of a thought of how can you clean up the area and get as much utilization for public access. So here's the money, so here's the last slide, this is what we received today, so this is myself and Lieutenant and the mayor, um, working with different agencies, so, like they mentioned before, we had an M O U with D C R. They said, oh, we have these fifty thousand planning grants, well, we're open, they promised this funding, and, uh, soon as the Vegas administration took office, they said, hey, we have this pending file, how can we have you taking your money? So we're, we're very grateful to them for, um, an application that has sat on the shelf for quite a long time, it is fifty thousand we spend, renewable to a hundred thousand, that's a planning and engineering group, so we have ongoing. We were, that was for, um, the feasibility of this center. The, um, what's that, the center? The sixty is the C Port Economic Council, that is boat ramp construction funds. C four is a leverage grant for one match, and we were able to leverage some of the grants that are referenced now towards our match. Two hundred and fifty thousand is money, the second grant from the C Port Economic Council, and that is for design and permitting of the Maritime Center itself. And we'll give a shout out to Mayor Coke, who is now a board member of the C Port Economic Council. And I have to say, we're really deep in front of this lot, of course, we're spending, it happened throughout the Commonwealth, and Quincy is not getting its fair share of funding, and so we said, how is it we get into the C Port Economic Council? So eleven designated for to the Commonwealth, which Quincy's won, they, Quincy is not a player, Quincy can have a seat at the table. So again, a big thank you to the Vegas legal administration for bringing Mayor Coke on board. Uh, this line just supported a hundred seventy-five thousand, that's the preservation funding, public landing, for the repairs to the landing, I talked about the deck being separated, the need to purchase new floats, uh, the need to repair the pilings. And that's just good band-aid money, but we're done with band-aid, we just need, need the facility to last, to be voting pub for the next hundred years. We have another twenty-five thousand, um, community preservation, when we first filed, this was what started the Maritime Center project, when we first filed, the original fifty thousand of D C R, I said, well, I guess that's not enough money, let's put a placeholder in. We did that, good thing, because we were able to, city funds, expect the.